Call the January seventeenth City Council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, if you could give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let us assume attitude of prayer. Most gracious and almighty God, our Father, we come once again, thankful for the many blessings that have bestowed upon us. Thank for this opportunity to be servants of your city. We ask the Lord to lead us, guide us, and direct our every thought in all that we should say and do. We pleasing and acceptable in your sight for the betterment of our community. This we pray, and thus in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On January seventeenth, nineteen sixteen, a group of professional golfers and several leading amateur golfers gathered at the Topolo Club in New York City in a meeting that resulted in the founding of the Professional Golfers Association, known as PGA. The lunch meeting occurred at the invitation of Rockman Watermaker, the son of the pioneering founder of Watermaker's apartment stores, now known as Macy's. The Topolo Club gathering began in series of several meetings over the next several months. And on April tenth, nineteen sixteen, the PGA was officially established with thirty-five charter members. Watermaker proposed that the newly formed organization hold an annual tournament and offered to donate money for a trophy and prize fund. That October, the first annual PGA championship took place at Sonoa Country Club in Brooksville, New York. James A. Barnes defeated Jock Hudson in the championship match, taking home the trophy in the first of two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Fact of the day.
All right, we've got city council minutes. Any provisions? If not, look for motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Don't think there's anything on gender review that needs to be clipped? Anything for gender review?
Nothing that I'm going to wait, made aware of, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, couple presentation, three presentations. First up, Apopka Surtoma Club, Lorraine Potter, come on up.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I know it's been a little over a month, but we are here to give away awards for the 2023 Christmas Parade. Unfortunately, the council meeting after the parade was canceled because of the holidays. So we're a little bit late. We're not sure how many of the winners actually remembered to show up tonight, but I know there's a couple in the house, so we're going to go ahead and give our awards. First off, we'd like to give the award for the best marching band, and that goes to Evans High School. I think their director, Mario Ford, is here.
You want to say anything?
Uh, no, thank you.
No.
So the best band, in addition to the trophy, also gets a cash award, and they get the honor of being the first band in the parade next year. So you guys won't be back further in the lineup next year, so, all right? Thank you so much. You did a great job.
Do you want them to hang out for pictures?
Yeah, yes, that'd be great, yes.
Just kind of hang out.
Okay, next, I know that we have Ms. Margaret Corey here, and many of you might not recognize her without her companion, Johnny the Great Dane. But Margaret and Johnny won the award for most creative this year. And many of you might remember Margaret and her former dog Merlin won a few years ago, but Merlin unfortunately is no longer with us. Johnny is very young.
How old is he?
A year old.
He's only a year old, so he's not quite ready for council chambers yet. And I'll go down the rest of the list. I don't know if any of these companies are here, yes? So we will do the award for the best float goes to Fast Signs. Anybody here from Fast Signs? All right, very good. I don't know if you guys saw their float, but it was outstanding. And I also want to thank Fast Signs because they are a sponsor of the parade. They always provide the clings for the dignitary vehicles. So we really appreciate Fast Signs. Thank you so much. The award for best of theme, and our theme this year was a Christmas story in Apopka. The award for best of theme goes to Trinity Christian School. Anybody here? Oh, wonderful. And they did a really good job of portraying both the secular Christmas story and the biblical Christmas story. So you guys, we really appreciate you.
Let's see, what do we have left? I have...
Best marching and performing goes to Kids Dance. Anybody here from Kids Dance? No? Well, they had a large group, and they always do an outstanding job, so I'll make sure to get their trophy. And then the special recognition goes to, is it Apopka Elementary? Apopka Elementary. Anybody here from Apopka Elementary? Wonderful. They also had a really elaborate float with dolphins jumping in the background, and very nice job. So we appreciate you guys. We look forward to seeing what you bring us next year, and belated happy holidays.
That's it?
So, yeah, we'll come down and get a picture. Yep, yep, y'all line up this way, and we'll get a picture. As a proud Surtoma, that was without a doubt the best parade I think we've ever had. So congrats to the, our Surtoma team and what they were able to accomplish this year. Next up, Bradley Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Bradley Williams, Parks and Rec Director. I'm here tonight to do a presentation on the New Year's Eve event. On behalf of the City of Apopka, I would like to take a moment to recognize and thank the Apopka High School Engineering Program and City of Apopka Facilities Maintenance Team for their work designing, constructing, and operating the first ever Apopka New Year's Eve ball drop, which was hosted at the Hurricane Grill and Wings this past New Year's Eve. A big thank you to Hurricane Grill and Wings for partnering with the city this year to host the event. And I would also like to recognize Rotary of Apopka for their financial donation to fund the cost of materials for the ball drop that was constructed by the Apopka High School students. The entire ball, made up of over eleven thousand lights, was constructed by the Apopka High School students under the guidance and leadership of their teacher, Mr. Mike McQuithy. Once completed, our Apopka Facilities Maintenance Team undertook the design and operation of the drop pole and drop mechanism for the ball under the leadership of our facilities administrator, Alan A.J. Jewell. Our entire facilities maintenance team, made up of Alan, William Cien Perez, Daniel Perron, Ariel Torres, and Zachary Jarvis, also helped transport, construct, operate, and take down the ball on the day of the event, dedicating their time on that holiday to ensure that a wonderful event happened at Hurricane Grill for the Apopka community. A project of this size and scope was a large undertaking and could not have been successfully completed without the hard work, time, and effort and engineering skills of both the Apopka High School Engineering Program and our very own Facility Maintenance Division. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Mike McQuithy from the Apopka High School Engineering Program to say a few words about his team of students and the ball construction.
When he says it was an undertaking, yeah, it was a pretty significant undertaking. It was a pleasure to do. A lifelong resident of Apopka, it's very important to make sure that Apopka is represented not only by our schools, but by everything else that we can do, whatever we can do. And that's what we try to do at Apopka High School. Our engineering students are some of the best that I believe in the state of Florida. From competing in robotics to building this ball, I find there's nothing that they can't do. Our future looks bright because of those young men and women.
I'd like to also just real quick point out, if my facilities maintenance team could come up, we've got A.J., Daniel, Ariel, and William are here with us. So if you guys would stand up and come up to the front here.
All right, A.J.
I'd like to now also introduce Mr. Mike Joseph, the owner of Hurricane Grill and Wings, who would like to make a few remarks and a presentation.
Kate, why don't you come on up with him?
Just tell them what the, what you're going to give them.
Hi, everyone. It's my pleasure to be part of this. Well, firstly, I should say I'm proud to be part of Apopka, and I'll do whatever I can for the community. And I'd like to thank every one of Apopka for supporting us, Hurricane Grill and Wings, over the past six and a half years. And once again, I am just honored to give a check to, to you guys. Your engineering students of Apopka, and, well...
Is it that? Oh, my goodness, it's big. Okay.
Yeah, it's seven hundred and fifty dollar check for the engineering program, Hurricane Grill.
I do want to go ahead and announce a few of the other supporters that helped make this possible. Scott and Associates, Angela and Jeremiah Scott from Hunt Club Business Center. Of course, the Rotary Club of Apopka did a five thousand dollar contribution to help be able to build the ball for the ball drop. Apopka Growth Alliance, of course, Michael Joseph of Hurricane Grill and Wings and his entire team, who was just extraordinary that evening and up until, leading to it. City staff, A.J., Radley, all of the support. Apopka Chamber Board members, Angela Scott, Chad with Twenty-Eight North Group, Duke Energy, Fast Signs, New York Life, Sunova's Bank, First Card Merchant Services, and of course Photography by Rallo and everybody in the community who came out. And of course, not, not to be forgotten, Groove Slayers. So, thank you all.
So we'll go ahead and grab, come on down, Rotarians and anybody who had something to do with the New Year's Eve celebration, and we'll get a picture of everybody. So come on down. Awesome. All right, next up, last presentation is the Florida Municipal Safety Excellence Initiative, the Certificate of Safety Recognition, presented by Trevor Reschke. Close enough?
Close enough, Reschne, yep.
Okay.
All right, well, first of all, I can't, it's hard to go after that, that last presentation. But as your insurance provider, next time, we'd like to know about balls dropping, about, in the city.
No, you don't want to know what happened.
And A.J. and his team for billing that. That is impressive. Anyways, my name is Trevor. I am a safety and risk consultant with the Florida League of Cities, the FMIT, which is your insurance provider, as you guys know. And I'm here to congratulate Chief Wyllam and the Apopka Fire Department for achieving their certificate of safety recognition. If you guys recall, it was probably five or six months ago, we did the same thing for the police department. And for the sake of friendly competition, I do have to say the fire department beat the police department by two percent. So, yeah. Exactly. So Chief McKinley and Deputy Chief Miller need to get on it for next year. So in all seriousness, I know the fire department has had some issues in the, in the last, last year or so, and they have done an amazing job putting together systems, management systems, to improve their safety performance when it comes to commitment to, to safety and health, when it comes to emergency readiness, incident management, training, physical, physical capabilities, and then just a whole plethora of other things that we evaluate fire departments for, a lot of technical stuff. So they did really well. They scored ninety percent overall, and I think that is a testament to, to their commitment and to your commitment as the commission as well. So I want to congratulate you, Chief, again. Thank you.
And I just want to, Sean Wyllam, Fire Chief, I just want to say a few words as well. I'd be remiss to not mention our Life Safety Division Chief Jerry Manard and Lieutenant Eric Berrios. They're actually in Phoenix, as we speak, at the Safety Officers Conference this year. So they have done a tremendous job. They've taken the bull by the horns and really moved us forward in the safety genre, and I'm extremely proud of them. And I also like to thank the rest of the city. This is a citywide effort, for sure. It's not just fire department, but public services, A.J. and his team, facilities and everybody else, and, and you, the commission as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to get a picture. All right, Susan, public comment.
Okay, Rod Olson, three one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lanes, here in Apopka. Couple items that we've talked about before that I will keep beating, and, and then a couple new items. First is with regard to the field charges for, for Northwest Recreation Complex. As you can see, Apopka Raptors pay thirty, fifty-three cents an hour for a field. Apopka Pop Warner, dollar eleven. Apopka Little League in softball, sixty-five cents an hour. And ninety-eight dollars an hour is paid by Central Florida Soccer Club. For all youth that participate in programs in the City of Apopka, they should enjoy similar rates. Moving along, and I sit there, just welcome, thank you. These pictures are pictures I took yesterday. Pads one through nine, and now one through, one through eight and nine through twelve in the City of Apopka. This is the worst I've seen these fields in the eight years I've been here, and I've been visiting here since two thousand and six. You see the white, which is sand being thrown down in the area. It's like putting lipstick on a pig. It doesn't do anything unless it's properly matted down. It's reseeded, it's aerated and worked. Some of these pictures, you cannot see the aspect of the holes that are created, which are angle twisters, leg breakers, that are potentially, while kids are to be out there. Our rec soccer's about to start, the travel soccer's starting, everything's going. We have got to do a better job on these fields. We need to have more fields so we can rest our fields properly. I think we've stopped, at least I hope we stopped. We've had other clubs that have pristine fields because they use our fields to practice on while they're resting ours. There's, okay. Next area I want to talk about a little bit about, Florida law requires hands-free through school and construction zones. As you know, I sometimes volunteer, and I did, I've covered a number of shifts as a school crossing guard. I can't tell you the number of times where people park all the way across or across, across, partway across a crosswalk. We cannot allow students to cross when that happens. We have to wait for the next light. Secondly, it's interesting to point out that one, as many as one in three, as few as one in five, parents dropping off and picking up their children have their cellphone in their hand, talking to someone. We've got to do a better job for safety. Let's see, uh, no, no, no. Picture Surtoma, make sure I covered everything here. The rates, the schools, going back to, I missed the schools. Wolf Lake Ranch, Ranch, which is part of the consent, sixty-one new homes means twenty-four new students means another portable, portable to add to the hundred and forty-one portables we already have. We've got to do something about that. Right now, we have, we go to the state, Orange County goes to the state, Orange County Public Schools goes to the state. Until the three of you team up and send the message that Orange County is the fastest growing county in the state, we have overcrowdings, a hundred and forty-one portables in Apopka. We need to address that. Running out of time here, last thing I want to cover is Apopka Citizens Voters has a candidate forum a week from Thursday, that's the twenty-fifth, at seven PM, at Victory Church. You can come see it live if you like, or it'll be livestreamed through the Apopka Chief. Thank you. Again, I appreciate it, but we need to do something about the schools, those fields and the rates. Thank you.
Chantae Jimson, Emerson Park, Reimagine Communities. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, everybody, for allowing us to speak tonight. I am here, first and foremost, to thank you guys. You guys partnered with us back in two thousand and twenty-two for our Read Around the City initiative, and we could not be happier with the results that we had from the previous year. So we are here again this year to ask you, the city, to partner with us again. And I know there's a lot of great organizations here in Apopka, and so you may ask, why Reimagine Communities? So just a couple of things. Just over the, the last year, we have been featured in two news segments. We have been on two radio shows. We were on Commissioner Emily Van Neel's podcast. We've been featured in the Apopka Voice, the Apopka Chief. We are now being followed by Macaroni Kids Maitland for all of our community events. And we were the last community champion of the year for Spectrum News. We are doing our part to make sure that we represent Apopka well. We are doing our part to ensure that our kids are improving in their literacy scores, and we have the data to now back up that what we're doing is working. So it was a little rough for us in the beginning because what we did was something new. We didn't come and try to do something that's already been done. We met the kids where they were, we listened to the schools, we listened to the businesses, and we decided, how can we do something new here in Apopka? How can we get the businesses, the churches, the schools, the municipalities to come together to foster a community-wide, safe learning space for our kids? And we've done that. We've done it not only this year, but the last four years. And we just want to expand our, our reach because when we came here, we told you guys we were going to do fifty students. And I'm not really going to go through the slides. I'm speaking to you from the heart because I'm very passionate about what I do. In our literacy initiative alone, this is a report from Orange County Public Schools. This is just from Apopka. We have four thousand three hundred and sixty-four students that are participating in our reading program alone here in the City of Apopka. Every school in our district has participated thus far. The kids met their million minute within two months. We have this community support. And if you're like me, I'm a visual person, and I like data. I know you guys like data. So I'm going to show you just from being in here today, if, we can't do this alone. It takes a team to do what we do, and we have a great team of people. So if you're on my board and you're here, would you please stand? If you have worked with us in the past, if I have worked with your business or your community, or we have partnered in any way, and you're here today, would you please stand?
Can we stand? I'm standing.
This is what it's going to take for us to unify our city. We live here, we work here, we play here. This is Apopka Reimagine. I'm not here to ask for funding for myself, but for these families, these businesses that we highlight every month, putting them on the map. We are making sure we're doing our part for the economic development of our city. We stay here, we bring different communities to our city to see what great amenities and businesses we have in our cities, and we hope that you will partner with us again on this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Chantae. That was goo, oh my God, I've never seen this. You see? You see, you're smiling. Have a good night. All right, bye. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Wow, I've never seen her that way.
Dennis Liu, 105 West Magnolia. Want to say something about the Camp Weewall thing, it's been kind of in the background. I've been out of a few meetings. I understood that the mayor said the Director of Recreation could say when the buildings could be occupied or not. Hopefully, he's getting that advice from some sort of state-certified inspectors and not just taking it upon itself. Fire safety inspections, health inspections, and that kind of stuff need to be done. I want to say thanks to the chamber for putting on the debate. Thank you to Commissioner Nesta's wife for putting it online. It's a shame that the Chamber of Commerce sponsored an event about a City of Apopka election in a City of Apopka building that I'm sure they rented, but they want to charge the citizens $25 a head to come to it. The travesty is, is that the chamber, the city, the administration, hasn't held a debate that is no charge, that more taxpayers could come to. You know, I don't know about your guys' houses, but I know a lot of houses across this city are suffering from the effects of this economy. And $25 a head to go sit and listen to who may or may not be your elected officials is a pretty steep price to pay for an event that should have been sponsored by the administration and held for free of charge. They're the constituents of the city, they're the taxpayers. I think they had a right to know. The city could have at least aired it on YouTube, but we had to depend on somebody who bought a ticket to air it with their telephone. It's a travesty that the city administration tries to subterfuge the effects of the upcoming election by charging $25 a head to come to a debate between possible public officials in a public building.
Albert McKinnney, 3603 Golden Gem Road. At last city hall meeting, I requested information on the cost overrun caused by the delay in construction of Fire Station 6, which is estimated is now going to cost an extra $2.4 million. The cost overrun will be offset by interest accrued on the million-dollar grant. What I'm requesting tonight is information on where that million-dollar grant resides. Is that grant in the general fund, or has that grant been invested in a high-interest account? How much interest will be accrued to offset the increase in the cost overrun? And where is that money invested? Because it's going to take an awful lot of interest to offset the cost overrun of $2.4 million. This is something that has repercussions for the city, it's coming out of our pockets because of the maladministration that this administration continues to have. Now, with respect to last night's debate, many of us involved in social media in the city were termed as haters. Nothing could be further from the truth. How much time do we give up on a weekly, monthly basis to come here and try and oversee what we think are problems within the city? We should not be the ones to have to resolve problems. We're currently in a situation where we have a commissioner, who serves on the planning board, running to have a seat here. When we requested public records, the public records were incomplete inasmuch as there were no signatures, there were no notary stamps on it. And for someone, as you gentlemen know and ladies know, because you've been there, you have to have an oath of office. You've got to swear under the pain of perjury that the information that you supply on these documentation is correct. If the document isn't signed and is not notarized, then the candidate has not fulfilled his obligations to run on the city council. So, my contention is Eric Mock is not entitled to have the opportunity to run as a commissioner in this city. Not only that, state statute is quite specific about the fact that you have to tender your resignation for any position that you currently have. At the last planning commission, Commissioner Mock was still sitting on the dais. He can't hold two positions, and as much as he's running for this office, state statute, under our information, is he should have resigned. That's just part of the maladministration that we feel. And I understand there's conflict here between some of the commissioners because they're people running for their seats. But the fact of the matter is, as residents, we voted for you to represent us. Now, I'm having to spend my time to try and get in front of a judge, to have a declaratory judgment, to decide whether or not Nadia and Eric are legitimate candidates. It's not my job, commissioners. I understand that you're conflicted, but realistically, you're here to represent us, and you should be inquiring as to why the city is allowing this to happen. Thank you.
Jeff Tyre, 1120 Leg Drive. I just wanted to see if, tonight, if the council could set the dates for the future charter review meetings. Nothing was done at the last review meeting. We seem to get out of there pretty quick without a date set for the next meetings. I think it would be a good thing for the public to know when those meetings are coming up, and if we could get that done tonight, that'd be a great thing to get done. Thank you.
Good evening, Sylvester Hall, 3091 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. Got my PowerPoint? Okay, I guess we don't. I'm gonna start off with what I always do. I used to have my PowerPoint presentation, but in the City of Apopka, this is a constant reminder. In the state of Florida, in our country, we're at a national crisis. Too many good people are sitting by, knowing and watching bad things happen, and being completely silent about it. Now it's time to stand up and say no more. There's consequences when we don't stand up. There's consequences when we don't stand up. There's consequences when we don't stand up. Another one of my phrases, when we normalize, when we normalize the abnormal, it desensitizes the truth. When we normalize the abnormal, it desensitizes the truth. Whereas sometime, people don't even want to hear the truth, or they don't care. And that's sad. This is going on three years now. As a citizen, I don't come here and advocate for myself or anything, it's for the people of this community that I stand here and do this. Because we, as citizens, we have to get involved and know what's going on behind the scene. Because everything that you see up front is not what it is. Depending on your experience, your leadership, where you've been at in society, your travels, everybody sees things differently from what's going on and what's being said back and forth in here. At the debate, I echo what my brother Dennis and Abby said about the debate. One thing in the debate, they was constantly talking about, we want to communicate with the people. How can you have a debate and it's not streamed? How can you do that? How can the county, say the city, put on that and say, in good faith, we're trying to educate the community? They're not trying to educate you. The way it works, remember, the mayor won with less than 4,000 votes, and you've got 65,000 registered voters. So, the way politics work, you get a few people, a few people that you can control the narratives, and they come out and vote, and you stand in office, and you make decisions for the masses. And that's how you control things. We, as citizens, the reason they treat us this way, because we go for it all the time. And we complain about them not doing their job, and we're the one put them in office. We have direct control of everything that you want to see done, you have the power to make it happen. You have the power to make it happen. When you look at abnormal, it is abnormal for us to go through three financial officers in the last couple of years. It's abnormal. And so, when you order a forensic audit, what the administration want to do is, oh, what you going to look at? Well, that ain't the purpose of audit. Audits is come in and see what's going on. And we need a complete audit, because we know the mayor's not fair and honest when it comes to things. So, we need a complete audit to see where the city's at, where the money's at, and then we move forward in that direction. Until we hold city council, the mayor, and elect-
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Missy Vananda, and I am here on behalf of the Epilepsy Association of Central Florida. We just wanted to thank, excuse me, thank the Apopka community for their wonderful support of the Jingle Mingle Tree Festival this year, especially the Parks and Recreation Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the wonderful volunteers who helped make this year's event another great success. We were able to raise over $23,000 this year for the Epilepsy Association of Central Florida. These funds will help the uninsured and disadvantaged adults and children who suffer from seizure disorders in our Central Florida community to get the services they need for their epilepsy management. So, again, just here to say thank you to the Apopka community.
Thanks for coming out.
Box 7, Apopka, Florida, 32704. I'd like to thank the mayor and the commissioners for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. As a resident, business owner, and civic leader, I want to thank you for your service to our community. I'd also like to recognize two Rotary dignitaries in the room. Our current Rotary Club president, Mike Poland, and our district governor-elect for our, when our 100-year anniversary is, over the entire Rotary district of 47 clubs, Michael Franklin. They'll probably look a little shorter after his term because there's a lot of weight on his shoulders, so. But we're excited to have them here tonight. The Rotary Club is proud to be a part of Apopka, and we're committed to making a positive impact locally and globally. Over our 97-year history, we've embarked on many community initiatives, whether it's hosting the Apopka Fair and Fall Family Festival, the Rotarian Lowell Car Show, or school fundraiser Pancake Supper, or supporting Shop with a Cop, the engineering New Year's Eve Ball Drop, awarding student scholarships, or lending support to other charitable causes. We want to make our community better. Our community is blessed with great people and organizations. We're better, stronger, and have a bigger impact when we work together. We're lucky to have great organizations like the Women's Club, Foliage Sirtoma Club, Elks, Shriners, VFW, countless others, as well as a strong faith community. I'd like to thank those, from some of those organizations, who came out tonight to show support. Thank you. A good example of an existing working partnership between the city and the Rotary Club is the electronic sign at Park and Main. For over 14 years, over 34 million views of messages have occurred. The community information has been invaluable, and with a recent facelift and technology upgrade, it's positioned to serve the community for years to come. We're excited to share that Rotary is growing and having recently added an evening satellite meeting to our traditional lunch meeting. We've found that many in our community are interested in personal development, networking, and fellowship through service. As Rotary Club of Apopka approaches its 100-year anniversary, we'd like to move forward with a legacy project. We'd like to create a community center in Apopka. We've updated the location of this project to the undeveloped area near Wells and Grosvenbacher where Buckins Pond is, and this area is part of the Apopka Athletic Complex next to Apopka High School. The property is approximately 13 and a half acres. We're interested in three of those acres. Right now, the area is uneven, undeveloped, and serves as overflow parking for some of the events nearby. We'd like to improve the property by adding parking and a community center. The Rotary Club has been working on a capital campaign for a few years, and employed an architect for preliminary site design and initial elevations. Also, we received a generous donation from Richard and Shirley Rissler and their family, the metal buildings that were on their Kelly Park Road property. We currently have possession of those and are ready to move forward with a formal plan. We feel that our community and schools and civic organizations would benefit from another community center in our area to serve the needs of the community. The two buildings are approximately 3,700 square feet and 2,500 square feet. There's also a covered area of about 2,000 square feet. We're asking to either be placed on the next city council agenda formally to present this, or are willing to answer any questions tonight, if you have any. We're interested in a long-term land lease of approximately three acres of the property so we can make a substantial investment in our community for our community. If it pleases the council, we could work with staff on an initial land lease draft to expedite the process. We're asking that Rotary take responsibility of the three acres as not to burden the city financially. Nationally, there are many examples of Rotary Clubs making substantial investments in their home communities, and we hope to do just that.
Just right, perfect. So, can the Rotarians that are in the room, can they stand? Let me just, yeah, okay, awesome, thank you, thanks for coming out. So, any questions for Bill or the team?
I mean, not any questions, but, you know, obviously, you've met with, I don't know if all, but-
Everybody.
-multiple people in this council regarding this project, showing us concept plans and so forth. I know one of the things that you all were waiting on was for us to finalize our policy around leases and surplus property and such. So, you know, I would hope that you can work with staff, or if that's the direction that the mayor's trying to go with staff, to work through something that then can come back to council for public inspection and for approval. But, you know, one of the things I think to point out, too, is, when we were discussing this before, is the parking improvement and the shared use of that parking, so that the people that are using it for overflow purposes today, barring that there being any events there at that time, it would be shared use and an improved experience there. So- So I look forward to seeing this progress in terms of going through the process with staff.
Yeah, that's part of our intention. I mean, it makes it safer and is better utilized by the community. Obviously, we couldn't do more of a public, you know, outreach until we kind of got some direction from council. I do have a letter from the principal of Apopka High School, Lyle Hines, that I'll give you guys a copy of, just so you can see. Because obviously, before we started this, we were like, let's get some feedback from the people who, you know, are our biggest neighbor right there, get their opinion before we even sat down with each of you. So I'll pass this out. I appreciate your time and we look forward to working together. But time's of the essence, so we're like, hey, less talking, more doing.
Right. Because I-
All right. Thank you so much.
Bill, I remember when you spoke to us, I did tell you about the ordinance. Did you get to see the ordinance that we passed?
I didn't see it in its final draft, or you know, final edit, but that's something that I'd be happy to dig into and make sure that we're working within those realms.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else? Any other questions for Bill? Well, thank you, Bill. Thanks, Rotarians, for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate everybody coming out with support. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else? That's it? Okay. All right. Next up, we've got nine consent agenda items. Anybody need to pull any of those items?
Not necessarily pull, just clarification on item number three. There's two, there's two named agreements that we're approving, but in the staff packet, it references a third. I just want to confirm that we're just approving the two. I don't know if it was just a typo ad. It was the Florida Economic Consortium.
Yeah, my apologies. That was a typo. We won't be asking for a new agreement with Florida Economic Consortium. That program's ended.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Anybody else have a... Okay. Not, we'll look for a motion to adopt the nine consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Joe Patton.
Today is a happy day for me. Hopefully. So today, I'm asking for the Commissioners to ratify the Michelle Boylan as our first Economic Development Director. Michelle comes to us with 12 years of economic development experience, six of those years for the state of Florida. She's also well into her certification for economic developer, and she is here tonight. I know that all of you have met with Michelle, and if you would like to ask her any questions or anything like that, she is here.
Come on down, Michelle.
I'll put her on the spot.
Yes. I think that's, won't be our first time.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I walked in this evening excited. I said, wow, they rolled out the red carpet. This is quite the welcome committee. But much like at home, the room cleared before I had anything to say. So I am excited to be here and I was very excited to hear the presentations and see the awards and see how the community comes together to celebrate the community. I'm honored to be here and to have been extended the opportunity to become a part of the City of Apopka family and the team leading the charge for economic development. Should you ratify the position, I look forward to starting in February and speaking in my official capacity at future meetings.
Any questions for Michelle?
No, we, I've had the pleasure of, you know, sitting down with Ms. Michelle and it was a good conversation and a discussion, and I'm happy to see her coming on board. It's something that we have been wanting for the past year. So again, I will welcome you to the City of Apopka and we look forward to what you will bring to our city.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
I have a lot to say, but I share Dr. Patton's excitement for this evening, first and foremost. We talked about this during our discussion together. It's kind of bittersweet, well, not bittersweet, it's not bitter at all, it's sweet. You know, I came in, when I first ran for this position, it was really around how do we make this community better for the families that came here to live here? And how do you create kind of that environment that we can grow into? The ideas of, you know, the live, work, play, we all hear it at nauseam, but it's that concept of building families and having them stay here and just being the proudest you can of a community that you want. And, you know, during my time on council these seven, eight years, economic development is probably, I probably wake up at the middle of the night and blurt that out because I say it so many times. But to kind of come to the end of my term or my service on this council and us to start this position, start this department with you running it, hopefully, is just, it's a sweet moment for me personally, but I think it's a sweet moment for the people of Apopka. It was refreshing to hear all four of the candidates last night in the forum talk about the importance of economic development, how they would support this role. So, and I thank Commissioner Nesta for the leadership of voting for this department and for funding the department because I think there's a lot of benefits to it. But I want to, you know, when people hear about economic development, I just want to, I want to read the questions that I asked you, just so that people understand the level of dialogue that we had and the decision-making process that I had going into this. And it kind of gives a reflection about what you'll be doing in your role. And so not to be too long-winded, I'll read them fairly quickly. My first question was, what excites you about this job and working for the City of Apopka? My second question was, how do you see the positions fit in the larger ecosystem? Like the Chamber of Commerce, the Main Street programs, the state economic development programs, the development community? How would you look at economic development incentives and/or grants to attract the right types of businesses, employers to Apopka? Fourth was, how would you build consensus or advocate your position with various stakeholders? Internal departments, council members, because all five of us have probably five different ideas of things, the administration, residents, businesses, partner organizations, both from a strategic direction and politics that will inevitably be presented, right? We're in a political organization, politics will ensue. You use the word proactive a lot in your application, which is nice, which is very nice. How would you execute on that premise and the role in terms of building relationships, networking, and telling the story of Apopka? And also any intention to build out this department? What does this department look like two, three, 10 years from now? And then lastly, if you get this job, what does your first 90 days look like? And honestly, two or three of those questions, I think you maybe said two or three sentences into the response and I just knew that your head is in the right space about the perfect fit for this role at this perfect time. You come from a state agency, you have state connections. When I asked you the incentive grant program, it wasn't immediately to say, okay, it's all our responsibility, but hey, have we leveraged statewide incentives? Have we looked at that? And you knew the names to ask. And so I just think there's a great opportunity for you to put your stamp on this. You know, I use the analogy like it's a blank canvas, but it's not. This city was chartered in 1882, so there's a lot of paint on the canvas already, but you have the opportunity to create your own stamp. And hopefully after this vote, you know, the canvas is yours. And I just, my ask is that the administration, this council, gives you the latitude that you need to do your job because a lot of what you're going to be doing is outside the four walls of this city hall. It's going to be out pounding the pavement, building relationships, both with people that are currently in Apopka, but those that we want to see come here. So not to be too long-winded, but that's all to say, I'm glad you're here and I'm excited for you and you have my support.
Thank you. I'm actually excited I didn't have to compete against you for the role. You seem to know just as much about it as I do and just as qualified as I am, but thank you. I am honored to be here.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I'm going to say welcome. I only asked 20 questions.
Which you did.
But I did provide a copy as well, so I didn't catch off guard. But I'm very excited about the opportunity for you to be able to serve. And Mayor, I wasn't able to get her to commit to 40 years, but she did commit to 28.
Yes, she did.
And so we're just happy to have you and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, Mrs. Boylan, I just appreciate the time you spent with me last week and also being here tonight. Our conversation was timely. It wasn't long-winded by any means, but I appreciate how you very specifically answered a lot of my questions. And similar to kind of that 90-day plan, I was like, look, you're creating this. This is on you now. A lot of your resume, things like that, had implementation, and that was a question I asked is, I need you to create. This comes to creation. You can implement all day, but creating, I need you to create a strategic plan for your department. You've got a lot of leeway here to kind of do what you want, and that was something, I think, of how I ended our conversation is, don't let your vision be swayed. You're the professional. I will, I commit to not getting in your way. You be the professional and knock it out. And then I also said, just, you shouldn't be here. Get out and go, go, go. You need to rebrand us, sell us, and then also listen to our residents. What do they want? Where do they want it? And how does it best benefit our residents and our small businesses that are here and the new ones that are going to be coming? So I appreciate your time and I look forward to everything you're going to do for our city.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I just want to echo, obviously I made a lot of the calls, your recommendations or your, excuse me, your references, but also called a couple outside the box, Senator, former Senator that I knew very well, and a current Senator that I know very well, and both gave you glowing recommendations. It's interesting, you know, you go back, you know, where you come, your roots are more rural, which is kind of where we've been, and we're transitioning to something other than rural, you know, suburban and maybe even toward urban. But, yeah, you've got a great head on your shoulders and a great, you know, attitude, which is what it takes. And tenacity because it's, you know, you're going to have to, you know, you're going to knock on 10 doors to get one good answer. And so we're excited to have you on and we're, the team is here to help you to be as successful as you can be and to be successful for the City of Apopka. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, need a motion from council to approve... Well, I guess we, anybody from the audience want to speak on this one?
Albert McKinley, 3603 Golden Gem Road. It's been a year of expectation for us and our Commissioners here, we put a great deal of faith into their judgment and that the fact that you guys are so confident in this young lady's ability is very inspiring towards us. The only thing I would ask her, in all sincerity, is to remain her own person because you are now a representative of the residents who will give you as much support as we possibly can. But if you stray from what we think is an honest way of looking at things, we will criticize just as we have done here tonight. But from all of us who I know have been excited by this, we extend you a really friendly welcome and I hope we all benefit from your service here.
Anybody else?
Sylvester Hall, I just want to say, welcome, welcome, welcome. I didn't see your face, I just heard your voice, your personality. So from the outside looking in, that's what we need. Welcome. I welcome to work with you. Apopka needs to grow. We've been this way for over so many years. We need to grow. You look like you have that personality. You sound like you have that personality. So I'm with you 100%. Let's go and see what we can make happen in the City of Apopka. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to ratify Michelle Boylan as the new Economic Development Director.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. See, on the fourth, is that right? The fourth?
The fifth.
Fifth, fifth, okay.
And I also like to thank the committee members who met many times with us as a group, Blanche Sherman, Chief McKinley, and Bobby Howe. Thank you very, you know, I want to thank them because they put in a lot of time and effort into reviewing resumes and interviewing and so on and so forth. So I appreciate that.
All right. Okay. Next up, approval Laurel Oaks Platte. Jean.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Laurel Oaks Platte. Subject property is located north of Joey McGuckin Road, east of State Road 429, and west of Plymouth Sorento Road. It's approximately 41 acres in size. The Platte creates 121 single-family residential lots and five tracts for stormwater, landscape, and amenity. The Platte is consistent with the major, is consistent with the major development plan approved by city council on September 7, 2022, and the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on May 2, 2023. One of the proposed access points to the development is shown along Plymouth Sorento Road. Additionally, an internal road race proposed to connect north to future development and plan thoroughfare that will eventually connect to Kelly Park Road and align with access of the Winding Meadows North Residential Subdivision. The DRC recommends approval. At its meeting on September 12, 2023, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Laurel Oaks Platte. The recommended motion is to approve the Platte and staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody?
Yeah, I mean, the only question is, the Platte is in sync with the development plan that was presented and all that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and just for the record, I did get an email from Ms. Butcher in opposition of this business. But, you know, when you look at 2.5.2, you know, I think the opposing was about access point on Plymouth Sorento.
Yes.
But the Platte does support the idea of roadway interconnectivity because we have the, that interior roadway that goes north, it was Florida Elm Way that goes north-south and then potential extension to the south below Joey McGuckin. So as long as the Platte is in accordance with the master development plan, my assumption is everything else meets the spirit of 2.5.2.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Any other questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rod Olson, 3156 Willing Hill Lane, Hills Lane in Apopka. 121 units means 49 new students or 2.5 more trailers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the Platte for Laurel Oaks.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,033.
Ordinance number 3,033. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from PD Plan Development to IL Light Industrial for certain real property generally located at 100 Hermit Smith Road, owned by 100 Hermit Smith LLC, comprising of 4.15 acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3,033.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,034.
Ordinance number 3,034. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from office to commercial for certain real property located at 1700 West Keene Road, owned by M.L. Carter Services, Inc., trustee of Carter Keene Road Land Trust, comprising 18.8 acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3,034.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,035.
Ordinance 3,035. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from off- An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from office to community commercial district for certain real property located at 1700 West Keene Road, owned by M.L. Carter Services, Inc., trustee of the Carter Keene Road Land Trust, comprising 18.8 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3035.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Which one is that?
3035.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was looking at an email that I received regarding that. Okay, so moved.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3036.
Ordinance 3036. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from in-progress to residential very low suburban for certain real property located at 1240 Usler Road, owned by Mark Gilman and Camel Tip Narasig, comprising 568 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3036.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3037.
Ordinance number 3037. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional to residential country estate for certain real property located at 1240 Usler Road, owned by Mark Gilman and Camel Tip Narasig, comprising 568 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. 560 acres equates to over 246 new students or 20 more portables.
5 acres.
Yeah, I don't.
5.68 or 5.68?
Five, yeah. It's 5.068.
I'm sorry.
And if my understanding, it's a single-family home, you guys?
Right.
One home.
Yeah. It was.
Yeah. The staff report says 5.068 acres and the ordinance does say that as well. 5.068 acres.
Okay.
All right. Your sentiment is, your sentiment is, is, is a herd.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Not look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3037.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2024-04.
Resolution 2024-04. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The quest, the request before you is council adoption of resolution 2024-04, Budget Amendment Number Two, Fiscal Year FY24 in the amount of $158,000. The first amount relates to $110,000 that was approved at the January 3, 2024 council meeting regarding a memorandum of understanding with unlimited capabilities to accept a donation in the amount of $110,000. The second amount, $48,000, is the item that was before you this evening, requesting a grant agreement be signed by the fire chief, authorizing interface, train the trainer program in the amount of $48,000. Total amount for this amendment, $158,000.
All right. Any questions for Blanche? All right. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2024-04.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Blanche. All right. City Council reports. Commissioner Velazquez, why don't you start us out?
Okay. I did write something here. Oh, okay. First, we, we had the parade Monday for the Honorable Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and that was a very well-attended parade. And unfortunately, 3 o'clock came and the, so did the rain. And I believe it, it stopped the parade from going at that time?
No, they kept going.
They kept going?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. It's always a, a, a well-attended parade when you go, you know, when you go down the parade route. It's always interesting and I enjoy seeing all the residents that do come out and support us and support the parade, actually. We have, for Friday, we have the, the Foliage Garden Center is going to be planting a tree at the Adonzo Williams Park. And again, you know, my condolences to the family. He passed away earlier this week. So be a nice sounded to plant a tree in his park. We also have, I sit on the board with the Wakiva Culinary and they're having their official ribbon cutting of the culinary on Friday, which is January 19th at 6:00 PM. And that's going to have all the sponsors and, and all the companies that have, have supported our culinary group there. And then we also have the groundbreaking for the Wild Oaks. And, oh, this past Saturday, I, I supported and spent the entire day over at the Sunny's Barbecue with the Apopka Police Department versus the Fire Department. We had a lot of fun. Of course, the Fire Department won all the awards, but the Police Department had that nice presentation, bringing their last dish, their dishes, their, their plates in. So it was a lot of fun, well-attended. It was a chilly day, but everyone came out to support it. It's one of my favorite events of the year, because we just, everyone comes out and it's a lot of fun. So that's basically it. And again, I, I saw Mr. Rod Olson talked about the next candidate debate, which is going to be at the Victory Church, and, and that is free to the public. Is, am I correct in saying that?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, I will voice that, you know, I did get some inquiries as to why we were charging $25 for the first candidate debate, but I want to thank our Commissioner Nick Nesta for doing the live feed and it is now on his site. So it allows a lot of our residents who were unable to go to see it and kind of listen to all the candidates. And that's pretty much it. And again, welcome, Ms. Michelle Boylan, and we look forward to February 5 when you start. Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, just a few, I guess, housekeeping things. First, first off, I saw some posting out there in the public realm, around Bay Ridge. So I was wondering if there was an update around Bay, Bay Ridge Cemetery, because someone had posted pictures that there was already maintenance done or clearing done. So last we heard, there were still trying to be title searches done on the property. Can, can you give an update about where we stand there? Because there's some misinformation going around there too, in terms of how much the city has spent on this endeavor.
Yeah. Radley Williams Parks and Rec Director. We did complete some cleanup of the cemetery, which is some of the pictures you probably saw online. We are still researching the title side of that.
So we don't own it yet?
No.
Do we get permission to access the property?
Yes. Yeah. We got permission from the property contact to, to initiate the cleanup, a little bit of cleanup.
Got it. Yeah. So, so if you could provide us updates on that one, just because I, you know, I was at a restaurant over the weekend and someone's coming up to me and saying, hey, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on this already. And I know that not to be the case.
Yeah, no, we.
And, but things are getting out there. I would much rather have a formal update and so that I, I can correct people if they're.
Absolutely, yeah. I can, I can make sure to make sure the council's updated if there's any, any more work done there. It's been initial cleanup with some of our city staff, but we haven't invested any money into it, obviously, until we get clarity on the title and further direction.
Thank you for you for starting the effort.
Right.
Thank you for that. So that, that's all I had. If you can, yeah. Another thing, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Wiggs came in here last meeting talking about the determination about the food truck. I, my, my feedback to them was, again, I can't singularly as a commissioner make a determination about how staff is, is interpreting our code. So I told them the more appropriate thing would be to meet with the administration first and run that to ground and then we can engage if, if it comes to that from a policy decision or if our land development code allows for escalation path or appeal path, you know, go that route first. And they're amenable to that, that update. Their, their primary question was, even if they're not doing the service on the property, are they able to park whatever it is on that property, even if they're not doing business?
And I, I want him to answer that question, but can, I'd rather have Bobby, let's go back and let's do the timeline, because I think what they brought to council last meeting was not factually correct.
Well, and I'm, I'm not trying to get, like, I'm not advocating one or the other.
I know that, but we, he's, he's given his side and I think we need to do the same for, for the, the staff side.
Yeah. So city staff had met with the applicants a couple of times. They came to the counter. They had indicated to the staff member that it was first a food truck. They applied for a business tax receipt. There's a piece of property down the street here of where the food truck is at or where the food truck is proposed to be at. It's a very small piece of property. They purchased it last summer and the property does not have a primary structure on it. When they turned in their application for a business tax receipt, it was noted that there's no primary structure on it. The food truck ordinance, or as it's called, mobile food vendor ordinance, requires there to be a primary structure on a piece of property. And more than likely, it's for sanitary reasons, for bathrooms, stuff like that. The Community Development Director and I met with them about, or about December 14th, I believe it was. Because the BTR was denied, they had stated that they had received approvals from staff before that it was a permitted use. The property is owned mixed-use downtown. Mobile food vendor is a permitted use, subject to the criteria of the land development code being satisfied. So that was the outcome of the meeting and then the couple was here at the last city council meeting.
So I guess from my, from where I sit, I think, I think they're, what they want to know is, absent them actually serving food out of it at this juncture, are they permitted to even store it on that location?
No, sir.
Okay. So if I, I'll send you the correspondence and if you can draft a response back.
Sure, absolutely.
And I think one of the, one point he left out is that, that the month before they bought it, the, the, the group that he bought it from spent, paid $4,000 for it.
Right. Yeah. We looked into the public records before meeting with the couple and there was an individual who owned the property prior to them purchasing it. I believe he paid about $4,000 or a little north of $4,000 for it. This was, I believe, in June of 2023. They then purchased it in July of 2023 for about $25,000, round about.
I mean, it's a postage, I mean, how many, how many square feet is the entire lot?
I, off the top of my head, it's.
4,000?
Not even that. Maybe a thousand.
Yeah. And I'm not so much concerned about the commercials. That's, that's a private person making a financial decision.
Right. Yeah, that's not a salient detail too. They just want to be able to start a business. So we just need to either figure out an avenue or work with them in some capacity to.
Yeah.
Make their point, so.
Because at, at the end of the day, they're, they're just.
Trying to be a small business owner here.
Granted, buyer beware on a lot of things, but again, if they're interfacing with our staff, my assumption is that they're just getting a consistent answer based off of our code. That's it. And so the most recent question is just about the logistics of whether or not they're able to park it, but I'll work with you to get a response.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, but, but there weren't any, we used to talk about, we gave four, there were four emails that we, we approved and there wasn't any emails that were approving the project.
We're digging into the wrong details there. I think it's just trying to figure out how we move forward from here.
I'm not, I'm not disputing.
We don't need to go back.
Yeah. Mr. Hitt provided a recap of how staff is representing the situation. And so I sent that back over to Mr. and Mrs. Wiggs, because again, I, I'm serving as an intermediary, intermediary and I'm not, I don't have the individual authority, nor do I have the skill set like Mr. Hal does on interpreting code. And so I, my response back to her when there was a dialogue back and forth was, I'm the wrong person to be in the intermediary here. What I need is just them to work with staff to run this to final point and then if, if there's still incongruency on their mindset is if, okay, then you can go down whatever appeal path that you might have, whether that's DRC Planning Commissioner in front of this council. But again, I think we're good. We're squared. We'll just get that. Okay. Something that came to light to me today, there was an employee, and this is just for general awareness for all of us up here, there was an employee that had sent an email to this entire council in September, October, and November, and those emails were caught in whatever ether that, whatever filter, whatever it may be, but there was an email delivered to all three of us. And I feel horrible for this employee who sent emails to us for three months running and none of us replied, because I don't think any of us got them in our inbox. It was related to employee sick time. So all I wanted to do is give awareness to this council that those emails are there and I think it's prudent for us to, you know, review them and then maybe come to the next meeting with a point of view. But I, I just wanted to go on record publicly that we weren't, we weren't ignoring this employee.
So what were we finding?
What's that?
Yeah.
Let me, let me explain for you, Commissioners. Robert Hippler, Information Technology Director. So we have a lot of security safeguards set up on email and email is a huge threat vector, as I've said once or I've said a thousand times. So we have a, one of our rules is called impersonation protection and it's set up so that if an employee has a name of John Doe, somebody sends in an email and says, oh, hey, I want to be John Doe at, you know, 123456@gmail.com and there's a John Doe that works for the city, Jdoe@apopka.net. It's going to see those two names and say, hey, wait a minute, these don't match. We have somebody here, we think they're trying to be impersonated, we're going to put you on hold. So those messages get put in through the postmaster, they come through the IT department, said message has been on hold, please review the message. Commissioner Becker sent an email to Chuck Maverick this evening, copied myself on it, inquiring about the emails being, not coming into his email. So I looked into it and sure enough, there is an employee here who had sent those emails and it was stopped by that rule each time. So the only issue I don't have is why we weren't notified of it. I don't have any notification of that email coming through and that's something that I'll certainly look into further.
Did it come from a personal? So you're saying?
Personal email address, but he is an employee, so it saw his name and said, uh-oh, something's not right here. So we're going to put you on hold, which is standard practice we do.
How did you find out about this?
Someone reached out to me and asked me, how often do I check my emails? And so I replied back and that's what the genesis of the conversation was. I said daily and clearly by the tone, by the question, obviously I was not responding to something.
So it went to all of you, but none of you saw it.
Because typically, you know, just to educate everybody here, on our iPads, if we get we get emails from a resident, it usually comes through. But we have a bucket of emails that get compiled by what you think is potential spam.
Correct.
And so then you click on one email and it may have 10 different emails that come through that might be spam and you can release one or reject one or whatever. But when I looked at both, my proper inbox and that one aggregate email that we typically get, it was in neither place nor am I deleted emails. So it that's what's.
It won't hit that mailbox because of the rule it hit and it's just a safeguard and there's a fine line. We kind of, you know, I can back it down a little bit, but then it's it's I wished I'd known about it early from the individual because I could have certainly rectified it really quick, but I'm.
So did you? Do you? So is it? This is just really concerning that are there other emails that are just out that we don't know about yet because nobody's brought it up and we think we're ignoring them?
If it's a city employee name and it hits that rule, yes. The public sending it in, that doesn't work here, it's not so much of an issue. Now, sometimes we'll have an issue. We have geolocation blocks on. I'll use an example for Japan. We don't do a lot of business in Japan. We get a lot of spam email, thread email, different things coming in for it. So Google lately, every six months, we'll get a email address that'll be a Gmail address that'll get blocked from us and the person sending will get notification that we're blocking them. They're like, hey, why are you blocking me? And when we look at it, we see that Mimecast, which is our email archive, is classifying that email as coming from an IP address out of Japan. So it's doing a geo block on it. So that would be one of the other things that we'll look for if somebody says, hey, we can't get in, but this is not a rampant thing happening and we're not seeing it. And I welcome any inquiries into what we do or don't have. I can certainly show you.
Wes was going to ask, I just on that, it's just really concerning in the sense that I don't want to miss anything and that's an important thing, especially from a staff member. So is there a way that you don't do it for everyone, it's for me, am I able to see everything that's been blocked from me?
When it comes through hitting one of our policies, it won't make it to you. So so hypothetically, let's say it does make it through to you and you click on it, some malicious email and, you know, you do whatever happens, you become compromised. So we try to stop that from the employees by getting it, heading it off, saying, okay, this is real, this is not real, and we release it or block it permanently. Ninety-nine percent of the stuff we will block because it's it's not coming in from a real person.
Do you have a like a compiled list for my email address of everything that's ever been blocked?
Being blocked from your email address, if I, yeah, it keeps a running block in there. I think it'll show me the last 45 days of what was either being held or being blocked from you.
And then do they just get deleted after or what what happens with those then?
So those emails, if they're not released on hold, they just eventually they will timeout and they don't go anywhere.
Okay. All right. I'll connect with you.
Again, if there's an email that you're in question, please let me know and I'll certainly let you know.
Yeah, that's just, that's really concerning. So, yeah, I just.
Again, it's a fine line of security. I can open it wide open and we can just say, green light, everybody, and we'll take our best chance. We try to, you know, we try to do the best we can with it. This one, three different occasions, I never saw it come through and I'm pretty attentive when I see these come through because I pop up and say, hey, you know, it's an employee impersonation attempt, you know, being held for review and I'll look at and go, oh, look, this is a John Doe, looks like he wants to change his payroll, he's being sent to one of the HR individuals when I know this isn't really him and I'll be like, nope, we're going to block you or I'm not permitting you. So that's how that rule kind of works and it's myself and the rest of the staff that have access to do that, to either block it or permit it. These were never touched. I never saw them come through. I don't even see a record of it coming through to any of our accounts showing that it was being held. So I can only see it now, looking back at it, looking at the header in the transmission file, seeing that it did hit one of our policies, but.
Okay. Yeah, and it's just something that I'll probably put on my calendar moving forward of like every 45 days, let me connect with you. Did I miss anything that's salient that I need to go back to? So it's just good for me to have that on my agenda. Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Becker.
Very good. Another another point and I feel bad because I this business owner, you know, west of town had approached me, this is several months ago at this point, but there was a when we when the legislation was passed around the liquor license and stuff like that and the CRA, that's in the downtown area, there was a desire of other businesses that aren't in the CRA advocating for CRA boundaries to be extended for for purposes of being able to benefit from that amongst other things, right? And I had a conversation with Mr. Hitt on this topic right after I had that discussion with the business owner and Jim laid out all of the different reasons or the challenges about doing something like that. In addition, obviously, we saw how how limited it was to even renew the current boundaries of our CRA recently. So, you know, I told the business owner, you know, I apologize for getting back so late, but I said that they need to advocate to all five of us their value statement as well as Commissioner Moore and get buy-in from all of us, you know. I can't champion that cause because I know that there's a lot of obstacles that are legitimate obstacles for us to do something like that. I just, I wanted to give you all awareness of it. I can certainly share the business owner's name after outside of what we're doing here so if you want to follow up with them individually, but I just wanted to put it on public record that, you know, I'm not forgetting about them. It's just there's a lot of challenges in terms of CRA expansion. I mean, it's permissible from a legal perspective, but it's there's a lot of hoops to jump through. I do want to credit, the banners look great for celebrating Black History that are up on the poles. Those look really good. I'm glad that we did that as a city. Second to last thing, I know, you know, in watching the forum last night, it's interesting because the chamber has issued a couple of letters to the editor on certain media publications around some policy stances that they they are champion. Neither of those policies came up as a question in that forum. And I'm just curious, you know, one of them's obviously one that we've already passed in terms of the investment policy. The other one is in terms of the bid policy and the 3% that we currently have in our procurement policy, if we have a locally located business, they can be 3% higher than the lowest bid and we can still qualify them as the lowest bidder. So we do have some provision within our policies already to favor apopka-based businesses. I just, you know, are we going to have a targeted conversation because, you know, it's not sustainable for all of this to play out in a newspaper or television screens. I don't know if anybody here has been approached because the chamber represented going to 10%. And I'm just wondering where the math is, where the calculus is behind going from three to 10. Because at some at some stage, there's an inflection point of, yeah, you're benefiting an apopka business, but at the same time, residents are paying 10% more for a project. And so I guess publicly I'm saying, if the chamber wants to meet with all of the commissioners and the city council or come and publicly present what their their policy ideas are, I welcome it, but I just thought it was, I thought it was a little odd that neither of those questions came up during the forum and again, there's there's no advocacy other than to letters to the editor. And then the last bit, it kind of, it kind of goes that route, too, the charter review dates, that's my last thing on my list. If we can get those scheduled and, you know, I don't know if we're thinking monthly cadence, if that's sufficient, if you're trying to do more frequent than that, but.
What's the pleasure?
I mean, I wouldn't mind setting the cadence of, you know, just doing that every month in between the two.
Well, if we can do two dates.
Two dates forward, but.
Two dates forward. Now, I did send a letter to an email, I should say, to our, to Mr. Chuck Varek because I want to be respectful of everyone's time. I just don't want to not show up because I think that's it's unprofessional and disrespectful to be here and then not show up. So I'm not available from the 25th of January till February 2nd because I did, I have a scheduled, you know, out of state.
Where are you going? Just kidding. I know, I'm just kidding.
But it's it was booked over over, my vacations are booked over a year and a half ago, so.
That that location is protected in our Florida state statute.
Yeah, I guess so.
But, you know, I did send a letter to Mr. Varek and I did ask him to, you know, let the commissioners know because I knew about the city charter. And again, it's just to be respectful of everyone's time. So, I mean, I'm available anytime, but I like to have two dates booked.
Can I throw out two dates and let's just react to it? So not to ruin everybody's Valentine's Day, being on a Wednesday. Can we do February 13th and March 13th?
Okay.
Sure.
So you want to do this on a monthly basis? Okay, February 13th.
February 13th is a Tuesday. Like gets everybody in the mood to celebrate Valentine's Day, all the love that will exude from this room.
Okay, so city charter and that's from 5:00 to 7:00?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Just keep it, keep it routine and then March 13th is that Wednesday between.
Let me check.
Because that's before spring break.
Okay. I am putting that down.
Is that amenable for everybody?
Yeah, just chime in real quick. Planning commission meets in this room on the 13th of February at 5:30. The planning commission has a meeting that day in here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's usually.
Starts at 5:30. Usually it depends about an hour to two hours sometimes.
What about the 15th?
We don't have anything scheduled that.
We do the 15th, Thursday?
15th is a Thursday and I have a, I might be able to get coverage, but right now I have a, that's the regular Poncetlin meeting.
That's a what?
Poncetlin, one of my other municipal plans, they meet at 6:30 on the 15th.
Okay.
If I can get coverage, it'd be fine, but I won't go till tomorrow.
Well, should we, I was going to say tentatively plan for that, you let us know. What's our backup date then if that is?
So the, what about Monday, the 12th?
That's good for me.
Monday, the 12th, Mayland meeting.
What time's Mayland's meeting?
They start at 6:30.
The 20th or 22nd?
20th is a Tuesday, Eatonville meeting. I do a lot of city meetings, but again, I can get coverage if I know in advance. I just have to know who's available on what time.
Who pays you more? My, my, I'm just, I'm just told joke, joke.
Or fires.
Why don't we do this, can we, why don't we tentatively say the 13th of February and then Cliff will get back to us if that doesn't work and then.
The 13th is fine, it's the room that's the problem.
I meant, I meant, excuse me, the, the, what was it? Fifteenth, 15th, I'm sorry.
The 15th was.
Is that, is that? Okay, let's.
And for those who don't care about Valentine's Day, 14th is also okay.
Probably not.
Now, now we're, we flipped off and now everybody's going to be so high off of Valentine's Day, they're going to come into this room.
Okay, so February 15th and March 13th, does that, that work for you, Cliff?
The 15th, if I can get coverage, which I probably can, and then the March what date?
13th.
Let me go there. It looks open, so yeah.
Oh, Cliff, I think your mic is.
It's open. The 13th of March is open.
Okay, all right. So we're looking at two dates, which is February 15th, 5:00 to 7:00, and March 13th, 5:00 to 7:00. Is that, is that what we're looking for? Okay, all right, everybody good?
Yes.
Okay.
And my last ask, my last comment is just, again, you know, I know those charter reviews can get contentious and I can handle, I can handle the comment about political theater and stuff that was on the Channel Nine interview. What what concerned me the most is when we, when we had the last charter review, we talked about potential commissioner expansion or potential districting and things like that. In that interview, you advocated for districts in the Channel Nine interview, but you didn't advocate that at all when we had the discussion here. So I guess my expectation for everybody is it's healthy if we all argue the points that we want to argue in here, just let's just all know what those points are so we can argue them. But to be blindsided on a Channel Nine interview, to say that you support districts and then all of a sudden, okay, that's news to me. Let's just bring whatever our opinions are to the table and be mature enough to fight for our points. So anyway, that's it.
Commissioner Smith?
Want to thank you everyone for their participation in the Malibu King Parade. Sister Mars couldn't be here tonight, who's the chairman of that, co-chair of that parade. Great participation. We had seven bands that participated this year with, I think it was 95 participants and the last half of the parade, they did get rained on, but I'm proud to say they continued the march and performed all the way to the end and ended up with a great presentation program at the John Bridgerton at the end of the program. And so just want to say thanks to the city, to city police, police department, Orange County Sheriff Department and to the VFW and the John Bridgerton Center for their participation, their support in that event. I don't remember what that note was. The other one was, do we know where we are in reference to the annexation survey?
I submitted my homework.
Yeah, Commissioner Becker is the only one that submitted questions, so if you want to need questions, we'll put, we'll put, if you get any questions, we'll have something put together for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
We'll be happy to do that.
What's the plan for that?
Well, we're looking for survey questions that so we can send out to the the unincorporated part of South Apopka.
So I, so how how I submitted mine, I submitted, I don't remember how many questions it was, it was less than 10. But then I also submitted, I did a screen cap of the city and just kind of drew borders around which addresses I think that we should send the survey to. It's not necessarily just South Apopka. It's certain parts of unincorporated Orange that might make sense to clean up borders and see what their kind of pulse is.
Have you estimated the amount of households that goes to?
No, but, you know.
We can do.
If I had to guess, it would be definitely less than 2,500 to 3,000 dwelling units on the areas that I put in.
And then what are we doing with that survey information?
Bring it back.
That's my point. I don't want to railroad your your time either, but at the same time, if we're just going to send a survey and allocate how many thousands of dollars to this mailing but not actually do anything with it or have a plan to carry this forward, then we're just doing what these past workshops have done. So we need a very precise plan that we all agree to and how we're going to move forward. So.
I thought the plan was that we was going to do the survey, send it out, get responses back, run survey, and then we was going to hire a professional to meet, to talk about advantages and disadvantages and then follow up with the survey. After that, then determine whether or not we can put it on the ballot.
So we need to allocate funds for that.
Well, we haven't gotten it yet, but we need to get the first survey.
Because even that depends on how many, how many residents we pick up. So we got, I mean.
How many residents are we sending it to?
Well, I mean, Commissioner Becker's got a bigger unincorporated swath than than was original and I know Commissioner Smith came up with even a, so there's, we've got, we've got to come up with a, together as a team, you know, come up with the same, you know, logistics. We're not, you know, we're all, we're coming.
Yeah, I mean, the easy, the easy part of this, right? We all turn in our, like I said, homework assignment. If there's, if all five of us have, the spirit of our questions tend to be the same thing, okay, great, we've got consensus there. If our boundaries of where we want to send it to are wildly different, we can have a conversation about, you know, let's narrow the scope, let's expand the scope, what have you, and let's just horse trade that, that kind of conversation and then get it out there because, again, we've got to at least take a step. And I think the point being is if, if we do get, the beauty of the survey results, if you do it in a scientific manner and the responses that we get, if we get a 90% response to say, I don't want to come into the city at all, I mean, if that's 90%, 95%, you've got a sample size that's material to what you sent it out to, okay, then we might be not doing, focusing on the right things right now. Whereas if it's more of a 50/50 proposition, that could then lean into, and I know Commissioner Nesta is an advocate for this in the past, I agree, is to have a very kind of professionally moderated, kind of like third-party person.
Intermediary.
Really get to the the crux of the matter. So I think, you know, again, trying to align where our five individual heads are at in terms of questions we would potentially ask, the boundaries that we would send it to, have that, get, you know, build consensus there and then get it sent out. Again, I, I would, I would have a tough time thinking that this is going to be a large expenditure for the value that we could get in terms of the insights from, from our, from our partners.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you, anything else?
That's it, till I figure out what my other note was.
All right. Commissioner Nesta?
Sure, yeah, I want to start with the Reverend Dr. Martin with the King Junior Parade was very well attended. I always have so much fun that in that parade. We had, Lauren and I were standing in the back of our truck and had the Akoi band behind us, so that was really fun to be right behind them. I was probably doing a couple of dance moves that everyone's making fun of me for, but that was okay. I really enjoyed my time. It was a lot of fun up there and obviously just incredibly well attended, so much energy. After that parade, Lauren's like, okay, let's get back to the kids, we had to do this, this, and I'm just like, let's get back and party with you. I'm so excited, this is so much fun. And so it was, it was just a great parade, always enjoyed, so thank you for setting that up. The, I have a road cleanup for Martin Street, named after Lieutenant Martin. It's on the corner, northwest corner of Martin Street and North Park Avenue. It's going to be February 24th between 8:00 and 11:00 a.m. It's basically just going to clean up this corridor, that kind of the entranceway to our high school, one of our high schools, Apopka High School. Clean up the trees there, a lot of them are dead. I'm coordinating with our Parks and Rec staff to figure out what needs to be removed, what
to be removed, what needs to be added, do some mulch, just clean up the area, there's a monument there that I actually did for Lieutenant Martin in, was in high school, I was working with at the time Commissioner Till to get that monument in there and worked with Mayor Land at the time as well, so just to clean up that area, just, I think we just need to brighten that up, again, it's our gateway to our high school, so excited for that. Again, it's going to be February 24th from 8:00 to 11:00.
Lieutenant Martin and what?
Martin and North Park Avenue, so it's a northwest corner there. Main Street of Apopka, they're doing a community survey, would love to get just some feedback there, you can either go to apkmainstreet.com or Main Street of Apopka on Facebook. Then, and Mr. Hippler, I can borrow you real quick, sorry. The, we talked about this in December and I know you did a lot of due diligence and work on the videos for the, the letters that were delivered to us without any return address, things like that, are you able to forward that video out to us? Because you, I, I'm fairly sure you kind of refined.
Which video?
The, I guess you would describe it as like a packet of letters that came in in one large envelope.
I have it, yes.
And if you can send us the copies of those, or at least me, I don't know if anybody else cares.
I can show you, well, yeah, you're seeing it from inside the kiosk, so you see the mail being delivered that day.
Correct. Okay, yeah, that'd be great if I can just get a copy of that and then it goes into, and it's just something that's really been bothering me recently, just with, and it's not, this isn't necessarily your issue, it's more with APD, I just, just the safety of our staff, getting letters with no return addresses, there's been municipalities that are having issues throughout the nation, just with, with residents dropping off letters that could have anything on it, there's just safety issues with our staff handling letters like that and I want to make sure that we have policies in place or implement some precautions that, procedures, whether it's handling gloves or something like that, maybe it goes to APD to get a review of just making sure there's nothing malicious with it, that's on it or in it, it's just, it needs to go through some precautions because it's going to, I just don't want to get to a place where our staff is affected in a safety way or a health way to ensure that there's no issues on that front. So I just want to make sure with the, specifically and how you kind of deal with that, is the return, if it doesn't have a return address on a letter that comes into us, let's go through a second filter of saying, okay, let's just make sure this is safe to, number one, be handling throughout, with staff touching it, things like that, and then also to be put into our mailboxes. So I just want to, and we can talk offline too, I know the Chief McKinley's not here, so just to create some type of additional safety measures there and, and I just think it's very important to make sure that our staff is taken care of because it's, it's scary what some municipalities are going through, so I just want to make sure we have something in place for that. And I believe that's it, thank you.
Okay, all right. I guess, Cliff, anything? Just that in the minutes between the scheduling and me getting on my email to try to check and see if I found, could find coverage, I found coverage. So the 15th, the 15th is confirmed. Okay, perfect, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, I've got quite a few things here, some of them have already been brought up, but Fire Station 6 groundbreaking, nice, nice event Friday, January 12th, so we're ready, get it, get it going, get that thing up and, up and running. I've talked about the Sunday's barbecue competition, great event, Fire's got it, got it going on, they've got some, they got some serious barbecuers down there.
You can get a body like this.
The Ale House groundbreaking Monday was, was a good event, had a good contingency from not only the Ale House folks, but the, the construction team and, and so really, really well attended, a lot of folks from the chamber. Obviously MLK Parade, probably the best ever, between the MLK Parade and the Christmas Parade, you know, you really set the bar pretty high, so keep it up. Let's see here, yesterday, they had the ballot recount, so I don't think anything came out of that, but, you know, they, I guess we had five people on staff, we had an IT person, we had three people from the clerk's office and, and one police officer, just to make sure that we, we were up to the protocols that are required by the division of elections and supervisor of elections.
Two hours and a second.
Okay, next up, we have Alonzo Williams, you didn't mention that.
No, I didn't, but we were going to have a memorial service for Commissioner Alonzo Williams on the 27th. The memorial service will be at the New Hope Mission Baptist Church at 10:30 and then we will have a repass at the VFW following the memorial service in honor of Commissioner Alonzo Williams Jr.
Awesome, okay. Two other events, tomorrow at 9:30, it's, I call it the Reedy Creek, but they've got the new name for, the Reedy Creek District is doing a small business, they're looking for small business owners that want to get contracts with the old Reedy Creek, so if you're a small contractor and wants, and want to get, you know, some of the Disney contracts, it'll be tomorrow morning at 9:30 at the VFW, so any of the small contractors out there looking for some contracts, love to have you come out and listen to Glenn Gilzine, who's the, the director of that organization. Next up, we've got the Geezer Arborist event, you know, it's, they're still setting up today, it starts tomorrow, Friday and Saturday. What a fun event, if you got a chance to get out there to Camp Weewa, there, it's a, an arborist competition and they've got, I think I just, I went to dinner with those guys earlier and they're represented by five different countries and 100 and, I think they said 160 people are down here, all over the country to participate and they, they do a pretty cool thing, they, they, a lot of the trees, they'll go through our oak canopy and diseased limbs or trees, they're taking them out, even did some power line work for us and so really great group of guys, so the, the, their opening ceremony is, is Friday at 11, but they've got, kids can go out and do some, some fun things on Saturday, so it's really cool event. And then last but not, certainly not least, on Saturday, Saturday sounds, we've got the Rolling Stones tribute band called The American Stone, so come out to the amphitheater 5 to 7 and have a great time, so thank you.